We will be having prayers and pledge by, by what's assigned on the agenda. You don't need to vote, no, no one needs to worry about voting today. There are no votes. Are we good Scott? We'll call in Kim. Hey, just push that a little bit closer to me then people will think that I'm, I'm a festered person as well. Yes. Thank you Kurt for the levity. While we're waiting for Kim to join us, I want to thank Scott Hart from coming out of the bunker today and, and doing our YouTube Live for us. We have a vast audience of one, besides Scott, so a vast audience of two today. So we're missing Doug and Wes. Hi Doug and Wes, I assume you're watching today. We miss you. Yes. Yes, the night is young. She's not answering, or it's not raining?
It's not raining.
Scott, you doing good over there?
I'm doing pretty well. I know Simon is most isolated, but that's probably smart.
They're going to serve us all day long.
Well.
Are you getting slammed at work?
No, uh, most of the ones that are worried, we do like telephonic messages because we're trying to keep it up our clinic. But uh, now I'm seeing weirdos swinging people around inside of the clinic. So you know, we need to kind of calm things down. And I think they're starting to, so that's good.
Do you think they're trying to calm them? I hope you guys start texting calming messages every hour.
I hope they do calming messages too. We turn the hat around, but you know, who knows?
Yes. That's right, it's, those, they could jump.
They're not sure where your sewer is. Don't know where it came from.
The beads, the beads. Do you want to try it just with a phone and a speaker?
We can, we have been, people have told us that's very poor quality audio in the past, but we might have to. I don't know why it's, it's, it says it's dialing, but it's not. Oh, wait, oh was that somebody's phone? Never mind.
Let's do one more time and then... Do you use the same telemedicine system that I use?
We use the IHC, we, I'm not sure. We've upgraded success.
Oh, I've got an idea. I've got an idea.
Just call them. The invocation will be Mr. St. Patrick's Day. Kurt and then Brittany, you're going to do Pledge of Allegiance.
Uh, go ahead Mayor, I'm going to try a, a different route.
Okay, so who's doing, alright, anyway, welcome everyone. Sorry, we were getting started a little bit late. We're having some technology issues with our phones. Trying to get ahold of a council member who is calling in, she's not feeling well. So to, the invocation will be offered by Kurt Osler.
Our only Father, this time as we gather as a city council and as city leaders, we are grateful for the freedoms which we have in our country. But at this time, we also are very mindful of the items and concerns that are going on in our nation. Our only Father, as we're away from our families, is that tonight we ask a blessing to be upon them, that they might also be safe. As we look upon all of our residents here in Highland, that you might have a special watchful hand upon them, as well as those in our state and our great country and in the world. Our only Father, we ask a blessing to be upon those who might be experiencing anxiety, or those who might be going through sickness, that they might be alert and attentive to those feelings. That they might understand the things going on around them, that they might be able to seek out for the help where that might be able to be needed for them. Once again, please be with us as city leaders tonight, that as we go forth and tonight and within the next many weeks, making decisions that might affect our city and its residents. We might be mindful of how it might affect everyone. Once again, please be with us, that we might be, travel home safely, that all will go well, that throughout those in our city, that they might be watched over. At this we say, "Name is Christ, amen."
Amen. Alright, Brittany, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brittany. We, we now have time for unscheduled public appearances. I don't see anybody coming to the podium. Is there anybody communicating on YouTube Live? I guess not. And so we'll move on to consent items, there are none. And after that, the public hearing on the 2020 bond series proposal to refinance the 2009 general obligation and 2015 sales and franchise tax bond. Are you going to do that Erin?
I can do that Mayor, so um, we, so this is a public hearing. We can do a presentation and I have one prepared. It's essentially the presentation that Gary gave a couple of weeks, a month ago or so, when the council first voted on that. And I'm happy to give that information again, if you would like to, for the public, or you can just do the public hearing. It is up to you.
Let's, let's go through the presentation for the benefit of the audience. Our vast audience. And then I assume you're monitoring the, the questions on YouTube Live?
I will do my best to do it both.
Alright. So if you have questions, uh, when we're done with the presentation, Erin will take a look at them and, and we'll follow up on those.
Okay, um, Mayor and Council, um, so we have, um, here's a, a list of our current bonds. So these are the sales and franchise tax revenue bonds that mature in 2027. So originally it was about five million dollars. We have about four million left on that, uh, four point six million. This bond is non-callable, so this is, um, uh, one of the bonds that is not part of what we're trying to refinance. But these next two are. So the 2015, um, uh, sales and franchise tax revenue bonds, um, the original was about for four million again. Total due is about three point two million dollars. And so this is part of the bond that we are trying to refinance, along with the pressurized irrigation bond. Now this bond will mature in 2022, so we are almost done with this bond. We have about one point three million dollars left on it. So what we're going, we're trying to do with this process is to combine, um, the previous bond with this PI bond and to refinance to get a better interest rate. So the potential new bond, what we, what we want to be sure to tell council is we're not going to put us in a position where we're going to extend the life of our debt. Or to, um, take on additional debt. We're just trying to get a better interest rate is the ultimate goal. And so, um, um, they'll essentially be split, so because some of, one of the bonds is the PI bond and the payments come out of the PI fund. And the other is, um, out of the general fund, so the PI bond will still essentially be paid off with this in the time that it was supposed to. And, um, uh, but then we'll continue with the remaining, with the remaining bond out of the, um, out of the general fund until 2026. So the potential savings, again, this, this will depend, um, right now we have received one bid, I know, on bonds so far. I believe, the deadline is tomorrow for refi, for bids to refinance these bonds. So what we're hoping to save is about a hundred thousand dollars over the life of the bond, so we're excited for that. We think that's a good thing for our city, absolutely. And so, uh, the one bid we've gotten so far does look like it will be about in that range. About a hundred thousand dollars worth of savings for us, maybe even a little bit more.
Okay, Erin, there, I will now open it up for public, for the public hearing. Are there any questions on YouTube Live or comments that need to be read?
Um, I do not see any on YouTube. Let me just double check on Facebook Mayor.
Yeah, let me check email.
I have a question.
Okay.
Couple of questions.
You're a member of the public too?
Pardon me?
You're a member of the public as well?
Indeed I am. What, who was the, which is the issuing institution on this?
We're working with Zion's Bank, though they're not the ones who would be, who would be purchasing our bonds. It would be a different bank or a different institution.
So Zion's Bank is a consultant?
Yes, so Zion's Bank is essentially helping us, um...
A broker.
Thank you.
And the, the rates, is this based upon rates from how long ago?
Um, so it's based upon rates, so we put the bid out a couple of weeks ago Nathan, um, and so it's based on the rates from the, these last couple of weeks essentially.
What is the projection on the change in interest rates with the Fed going to zero?
Uh, I know that, as Gary and I spoke briefly about this, that it was, I, we definitely were saving money, um, at this point. But there's so much fluctuation right now, I'm not exactly sure what the interest rate is.
Okay, I was just wondering, cause was it last night the Fed put the?
Right. I think, I, I would bet that the proposal came in just about that time, so they probably had already prepared it before the Fed did make that change.
So we might still be able to get a slightly better rate?
Might. Um, uh, the deadline is tomorrow, so I'm not sure if there are any others who are going to be bidding on it at that point.
Maybe to kind of, Tim, my understanding is when we look at what we're going to be doing with the bond versus what the Federal Reserve has done, is there's an overnight lending that the Federal Reserve does between banks. And that's where we see some of the lending institutions of what they're doing. You know, what we're going to be going out to is we're going out to a bond market, and the bond market has been fluctuating quite a bit over the last two weeks. But we, we will probably be looking a little bit in that bond, I'm hoping. So what we, my understanding is what we approved is it has to be lower than three percent. That's it does not go out for the bond. We estimated, I believe in our documents somewhere right around two percent, that's why we thought it would be wise to go out. And it sounds like, so the bid you received, is that a set interest rate, or will that be at the time when we go get the bond? Do you know?
He got one proposal today. Um, I would assume that the proposal would include that interest rate, because other, we've got to analyze it, right? Otherwise, how do we know whether or not we want to accept that proposal?
So that proposal would have had a set interest rate, and you're saying that proposal met the criteria here, so if we didn't get any other proposals?
Initial blush, we haven't done a full analysis of it, but initial blush does look like that it, it has met the criteria that the council, so the council passed that resolution saying, within these parameters, we authorize Gary, our finance director and the mayor to issue bonds. So initial blush, it looks like it's going to meet those parameters.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, as we're looking at the interest rates, it's hard, because the other issue is, is there's a lot of, you know, one concern I do have is we have a lot of homes refinancing. And we're starting to hear some mortgage companies are so busy that people pull back. I even heard today of some lending institutions, they're nervous what to even be doing in certain things. I think we'll be okay with a municipal bond, uh, you know, and, but, uh, uh, this is a great thing, I think, for the city, they'll save a hundred thousand dollars, so.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry if there was other questions.
Go ahead.
So I have a question. Um, it says the bond will not mature in more than ten years. Now, the one bond we're paying off, the farthest one that goes out, is 2027. So why would we have a stipulation not more than ten years? It seemed like we'd want to keep it under seven years. I thought the goal was not to extend the bonds out.
It is, and so the, the resolution was set with more broad parameters than what the, um, what the mayor and the finance director would feel comfortable with. Just to kind of give us even a bit more wiggle room, is how I've heard Gary explain to us. But, um, Gary has, the finance director has said multiple times that he would, he doesn't want to extend the life of our debt. He does not want to push it out more. And, um, so the param, while the parameters, the resolution that you passed did give us ten years, um, we, we as staff have heard from council and we agree with you that it, we don't think it's wise to go clear out to that ten years.
Right, so Scott, I would support, we do not want to go ten years. We want to get the debt, you know, we want to be debt free. Like you said, in seven years is kind of what the plan was, you know, we don't want to...
Still is.
Yeah.
The mayor won't sign it if it's... The mayor won't sign it if it's more than what our current date is either. So this is just a public hearing?
Um, we, I will double check again, but, uh, to this point we have had no comment. So it looks like three people are watching, I think I probably count as one of those, so maybe two people are watching from home right now.
Well, hello?
Maybe one of them Scott, so maybe one person.
Wes or Doug, one of the two.
Four are watching.
Okay, anyway, uh, since there's no comments, we'll close public hearing and, and move on to the next discussion item, which is garbage services contract. I assume that's you Erin.
That is me. Okay, Mayor and Council, so to give you some background and help refresh you, so we've been talking about this for a long time and with a previous council. So I apologize if I say things you don't understand or don't remember, please tell me and I, because I forget, forgotten who I've told what to. Give you a high level overview, our contract with Republic Service expires in July of this year. And they are, they have been our hauler for the past fifteen years. We entered into an initial five-year agreement with them in 2005 and we've extended two times. So the council elected to go out to bid, um, for that contract. Right now, so right now, our contract with Republic Service will cost us around five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars this year. That isn't our total bill for gar, garbage, that doesn't include the tipping fees or like the amount we, for billing or staff time, that type of a thing. This is just strictly for our hauling contract. We have four-year information about forty-five hundred garbage cans, two thousand second garbage cans, and twenty-eight hundred recycling cans. Uh, that was a poll, January of this year. So three different bidders submitted proposals, um, the three major haulers in our area, so we were pleased with that. So I'm going to go through them one by one and give you a high level overview. Ace was our first submitter. They, um, some of the good things, they are a local company, um, they're, so they're smaller, they're headquartered in West Valley. We, we talked about in our proposal, we'd like to switch off of Fridays, because we get complaints from our residents, um, because we're closed on Friday. Even though really what they need to do is call our hauler directly, they're, they're frustrated when they can't get through to us. So, um, I, so in our proposal, we said we'd like to switch away from Fridays and, um, you know, maybe early in the week, that would help North Point out actually, based on their, um, based on their workload. So, um, Ace was willing to accommodate that for us, uh, and they have a transfer station, if we are interested in pursuing that in the future, that actually charges slightly less than North Point right now. It would only equate to about four thousand years, and there's a lot that goes into the transfer station outside of just the cost. So I'm not saying we want to pursue that right now, but it's something they brought up in their proposal.
Where, where is the transfer station?
Oh.
Is this the one out in Eagle Mountain?
Yes, it's IRL.
Yeah.
So it's a further drive.
Which is a problem if people are doing regular garbage.
Say again Reese? That's the landfill. I apologize, I'm mixing up my things, so there's, um, their Ace's transfer station is in Pleasant Grove, the landfill is out in Eagle Mount, near Eagle Mountain area. One thing that's good about Ace is their calls are answered twenty-four seven, um, so they have a typical, um, they work from seven AM to five, um, five PM. And in between those sign, those times, they go to a call, um, an answering service, but you're always talking to somebody when you call them. And, um, they are set up to do monthly reports to the city about missed cans, complaints, that type of a thing. So we can really understand how, how they're doing as a company and we can track how things are going over time. While our, our proposal said we want to do a five-year contract, they opted to say, hey, if you do an eight-year contract, we'll give you a five percent discount on that. And they did, they actually gave us an option to do curbside Christmas tree pickup. If you remember, last year we switched over to a centralized location, just so that it was easier. Our city was big, it was taking a long time for everybody to get around, um, for an extra two thousand dollars. But, um, their total bill, and this is considering if we did an eight-year contract, which gave us a discount, was six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So, um, they are the highest bidder by quite a bit. Next, um, so I went in alphabetical order, next is Republic Services. So again, as we talked about previously, they've serviced Highland for the past fifteen years. Their proposal emphasized quite a bit about safety. They have a better safety record than industry average. I will say, Reece DeMille, um, our contact with Republic is here, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer questions if you would like. So they have a customer service center in Phoenix, that's where our customers call when they have issues. To be totally honest, we struggled a lot with the call center when it first launched. Some people would, when they got there, they would say, "We don't service Highland," or they would give incorrect information. That has definitely improved, I think it's been about two years since the call centers opened, so that has definitely improved, but it was a struggle for a while. Their proposal indicated Republic is willing to work with us to change our date away from Friday. And, um, they will likely also have a transfer station in the future, again, if the council wanted to pursue potentially moving away from North, North Point. And it would be in the Utah County area.
So this, so currently we're paying five hundred and twenty-two thousand, and this bid comes in at five ninety-six, correct?
All, I should have said this in the beginning, all of the proposals were an increase. We did expect that. Our, our rates are somewhat low, because, so this is a fifteen-year contract, that locks us in at a two percent flat increase every year. If you remember, we are one of the only who has that low of an increase. Most are either three percent, or they're tied to CPI or something like that. And some other city contracts even have a fuel surcharge. Ours is so old that we don't, we were lucky and we don't have any of those things. In addition, the recycling market has changed dramatically over the past couple of years. And if you remember correctly, for the past year or so, we've had conversations with Republic, hey, we, can we raise these recycling rates? And so now we're at the contract renegotiation point, they've asked for an increase in those rates. So both Republic and Waste Management is the next one I'll show you also, and they were both increased.
So let me just, so with this, you're saying this is now a fifteen-year agreement?
No, 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 no. They, they have serviced Highland for fifteen years. All of the bidders did a five-year contract is what we've asked for.
So, just to help, so when, before there was an option to renew with Republic and not go out to bid?
Yes.
What was that option at? Just so we kind of are educated that way.
Um, I, uh, so this is a hard question. I don't want to dwell, dwell on this too much, because really that number is gone, but it was actually, so it was still an increase. But it was to, um, five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, um, which would have, which is lower than any of the other bids that have come back. So Reese, you know, he, we were told that they'd probably all be higher than what he originally gave us, and that was correct. Back to Republic, kind of giving you an overview, um, they do have longer customer service hours than some other where a live person will answer. So five AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday. And, uh, in their proposal, they talked about this new system that we can implement, that they've done in other cities where, um, essentially it would give us the ability to input all of our information, all of our addresses into the system and the number of cans that are there, so that we can get good reports. Because right now we struggle, we don't really, you know, we have our information in Casell, in theory, about how many cans are everywhere, but we, that information isn't tied anywhere to Republic. So we have a hard time getting data from them in terms of reports, numbers of missed cans, that type of a thing. This would correct that problem and allow us to, um, and allow us to get that data that we, we cannot get currently. And again, their cost, uh, so this is an annual cost, five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Summary of Waste Management, so they were the low bid, um, however, and so our, our, our proposal was specific that we will look at cost. We'll also look at customer service, we'll look at reputation, other things. So they were the low bid council. They are the largest company of all of the bidders, and with that comes some pros and comes some cons. A large company has a lot of data, a lot of cool tools, a lot of, um, things that come with a large company. So, um, while many of these things are available with Republic Service, um, I think a couple of specific things, they do an online chat and email system with customers. They have a web, um, you know, that you can also talk to customer service through an app, um, do things that way. Though Republic has that as well, though we're currently not utilizing that system with Republic. Their, uh, their proposal focused heavily on their training of their customer service staff. They do quite an extensive training there, uh, to try and eliminate problems with communications. They have a, a computer system on all of their trucks for real-time information, so customer service agents can pull up the information and say, yes, this truck, you know, has been through your area. If your can was missed, I can send them out, oops, that type of a thing. And they have their own recycling center, so right now our recycling is hauled to, um, Rock Mountain Recic, Rocky Mountain Recycling. And, um, conversely with this, Waste Management is proposing taking it to their own center, that it's actually just opening.
So which, uh, transfer station do they use?
All of, all of the bids will use North Point as a transfer station. We are locked into a separate contract with North Point that says we're with them for at least another two years.
Well, they renewed the first of the year, and that, so for two years.
Two years.
To get out of that, you'd have to notify them, um...
By December of this year, if council wanted to pursue that, but that's not something we want to investigate right now or pursue right now.
So on these...
Okay.
Different bids, what's their proposal with recycling? Do, do we pay the tipping fees?
For Waste Management?
For any of the bids?
All of them, we said the default is you pay the tipping fees, um, however, we're willing to consider alternate proposals. So, um, Republic and ACE both just said we'll pay the, they, that, that company will pay the tipping fees. Waste Management gave us two different options, one was we pay the tipping fees, the other was, um, they did. So, this proposal, the five hundred and eighty-five, is with them paying the tipping fees. Um, in my analysis, it looked more economical for the city, and it, it shifts the risk over to Waste Management instead of us, um, whereas our budget could, it would, if, as recycling is probably going to continue to increase, it's harder for us to set the recycling rate and trying to recoup those costs to our residents, and I, I would hate to have to change mid-year or anything like that. So, um, it looked like it was better for us financially anyway, plus, I frankly, I think it's a better choice to shift the risk to them. For our city budget.
Do they all have the same accelerators?
Um, yeah, like an annual renewal rate, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so, there's, I'm assuming built into these are annual increases or maximum annual increases?
Um, Waste Management's was three percent, um, Republic Services was, uh, they were very similar. Um, uh, Reece, do you wanna come up? I know you had questions or things you wanted to say anyway, or yes? Um, sorry, Nathan, maybe Nathan and I are miscommunicating. Reece, it seems like you were letting us choose three percent or CPI, and then we have.
There's a garbage and tracks, garbage and trash CPI index on line two eighty-six of the Bureau of Labor Statistics. You can choose that or three percent.
And then we also had a recycling inflator essentially, so, I'll, you can explain that, Reece.
Yeah, the recycling, what it does is we pay the tipping fees, but if, uh, if the market gets better and goes down, then we lower our rate, so, you make that up. If it goes higher, then you pay that higher, but if it goes down, you get it, you get the benefit.
So, Erin, in the bids, does it include the recycling cost in these bids, or is that separate?
Yeah, so, your five eighty-five, essentially what it is, it's, um, for Waste Management, it's the number of cans times the rate per can, plus, uh, we have to pay, you know, for like our spring cleanup and that type of thing. Same thing for Republic, it's your total annual, what we're expecting it to cost the city over the course of the year.
So, Reece, I appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
You know, we heard earlier tonight, we've heard, it appeared your company was okay renewing, and I don't know where, you know, the contract at five sixty-six, but your bid's now coming in at five ninety-six, about thirty thousand more. Is, is there a difference between the two services, what we, you know, your bid at five ninety-six, and then if we would've renewed at five sixty-six, is there a difference in those bids?
Well, I don't know if there was anything specific, I'm trying to think if there was anything specific in the RFP. The difference was, is if you work with us locally here, I can work with you, so that's why I was trying to come in and get you to, to extend those contracts without it going out to bid.
So, since, you know, we haven't, we, our bids still, I mean, we still have a contract with you, is if we go ahead and renew, can we get the five sixty, I mean, this is the business side.
You can't, since we went to bid, we have to, we have to evaluate the bids that came in. We can't, uh, negotiate with the back bids.
If it's just a renewal of a current bid, or a current?
We, we went out, it wouldn't be fair to the other bidders, right? So, that, I mean, that's the procurement process, if you go to open bid, you have to analyze the open bid. So, we would have, if, if we allow Republic to submit an alternative bid, we'd have to allow the other two to submit alternative bids.
So, and I, I believe, yeah, on the renewals, you have control, on the open bids, it goes up the chain a little bit?
Yeah, well, and, I mean, I understand Nathan's saying, but in, in my experience, and we've been the low bidder in certain cities, when they've said, well, we don't have to give the bid to the lowest bidder, and this isn't an RFQ, this is an RFP, so, they can negotiate whatever they want. We'd be, I mean, as your partner for the past fifteen years, we'd negotiate whatever we, we felt like we need to. I don't think it's gonna get to five sixty-six, or five, whatever it was.
Sixty-six.
Uh, five sixty-six, um, just because of the volatility of the markets today, but, um, you know, we would do whatever we can to, to try to.
Now, please explain that again, and Nathan kinda chiming, so, you're saying, see, I guess my understanding is we have a current, why can't you, and I'm just trying to understand the city system, but, or the governmental, if you have a current contract, why can't you go out to see if there's other prices? But if not, you renew your current contract, why can't you do that?
Okay, so, so basically, you, eh, so basically, what we've done is we've said, hey, we, uh, Republic, they offered us a, a deal to renew. We said, hey, we don't like that price, we wanna go out to bid, and we asked three companies to provide a bid. And then now, we've said, okay, uh, Waste Management, you're the low bidder, but, oh, by the way, uh, Republic, your current contract, can you beat Waste Management's bid? That's not fair, that's not a fair ethical practice, so, I would have a, a issue doing that. Um, I'm happy to talk to Rob about it, step out and talk to Rob about it, but from my experience, that, that would not be, uh, a legal practice to do. I mean, you're right, you can, you can reject all the bids and go out and, uh, try to renegotiate, but that's, that would be a challenge in my opinion.
Go ahead.
I, I was just curious, um, can you kinda educate us a little bit more about the recycling? Because I understand, one of the big markets for recycling products is China, and they're, they're not wanting as much recycling material, so, what do you do with your recycling material, Republic?
So.
Do you still try to get it all to China, where does it go?
Oh, no, it's, uh, well, card, they still take cardboard, and I don't, and, and I don't pretend to know the markets today, 'cause they're fluctuating every single day on what people are taking, but we try to find alternative markets, whether it be South Korea, Korea, or Malaysia, or the Philippines, or any other areas that will buy it. So, we're continually looking, uh, for those. Now, again, we're not the seller of the product, we take it down to, to the transfer station, then it goes to Rocky Mountain Recycling, so that's, excuse me, that's what they are doing.
That's where it's going, okay.
But it's.
They can't turn it.
They're just scrambling like crazy to, to get, to get those to markets that will buy. I will tell you, though, that, I mean, I took some elected officials down to our transfer sta- our Materials Recovery Facility in Las Vegas a few months ago, and they were amazed at watching the process and seeing how these things are still being recycled. I mean, it's, it's a harder sell, and there's not as much money as, as there once was, but they're still going to places.
Still recycling.
It's still happening, yeah.
Uh-huh, still worthwhile.
So.
So, you have your own, Republic has their own in, in?
We have the largest Materials Recovery Facility, I believe, in the west coast, uh, or west of Mississippi, it's in Las Vegas. It's huge, so if you're ever in Vegas and wanna go for a tour of the Murph, let me know.
But that's, uh, is it not cost-effective for you to use that from here, because?
No, no, you'd be, I mean, just the transportation would get you. So, we do take, um, we do take all of, we pick up all of Washington County, curbside recycling, and we take all of it there to that facility, we drive it now. Not in individual trucks, we put it in bigger trucks and take it down.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for?
I have a question. You mentioned, it's either, it's the choice of the, of the city to pick a three percent annual increase, or some sort of cost of living increase or the cost of doing business. Can we make that determination at each year, or that has to be determined at the very beginning of the contract?
At the beginning. The reason why, I mean, most, most cities historically have done the, the index, but then, it got to be so volatile, they'll say, you know, I just wanna know so we can budget this. So, they just say, they kinda looked at what the averages were, and they said, if we can get a three percent fixed CPI, that would be better. And last year, kinda the average was about three point one-eight percent on the, on the garbage and trash index on that line two eighty-six, so, they just.
Over the last ten years or so?
Seven, I took it over seven.
Over seven years, that's about the average, three point one.
Where did I hear two percent? That was a different company?
No, that was our original.
No, that's what you had had in the past, over the last fifteen years with us, your average was probably about two percent, but costs have obviously gone up.
Right.
Um, and so. Yeah, three percent is, would be a very fair index, we get, you know, anywhere from three to, to four.
And so, the recycling on your contract was variable, it's?
Well, that's where it's, we put in a baseline at ninety-five dollars a ton.
Okay.
And then anything over, and then we look at it so that your price doesn't fluctuate, she said we don't wanna change prices, you know, mid-year. We wouldn't adjust the price in the middle of the year, we would keep it there, and then we would look at your July first increase, and it would be, let's say, you chose the three percent, you would get the three percent increase, and then we would, you'd look at what that pri- what the average per ton rate was compared to ninety-five dollars. And then it's a, it's a penny for every dollar it goes up or down. So, if, let's say the average was eighty-five dollars, we take five dollars, we take five cents off your, your per can rate for the next year.
Okay.
And so, we look at it on an annual basis, so that Erin's not going crazy with up and down, uh, rate changes.
All right, and what, uh, Erin, what timeframe do we have to make our decision on, on this?
So, our, our contract runs out in July, I, I know the carriers would, uh, if we are going to switch a carrier, especially the sooner the better, um, to give them time to gear up, because what that means is Republic taking all of our containers away, and Waste Management, I'm assuming, delivering all of new containers.
You know, so, Erin, one question I have is, you know, when we, I remember trying to, you know, trying to forecast, you know, 'cause it was going from five twenty to this, the five sixty-six, we also looked at what other cities were paying, they kinda helped give us guidelines. Why do you see things coming in so much higher now than what we saw what other cities were paying currently? What, what, you know, what, you know, and maybe that's just the way the market is currently, but, I, I mean, it's just, you know, it, it just seemed to, that, that was why.
We were hoping we would get a cheaper rate, right, when we were looking at some other cities, they were getting lower. The only answer I can give you on that, Kurt, is those, you know, the established, the rates that we were looking at were with cities who had been with their providers for a little while, right? So, right now, um, especially for Waste Management and ACE, they have to factor in the fact that they have to buy nine thousand new cans for us, and maybe, you know, recover that in five years. Um, we're also a small city, right, in comparison to like a Lehigh or something like that, where maybe you can get a, a better bulk rate type of a thing. Um, those are the only answers I can give you, I don't know more than that.
Yeah, as I recall, though, when we made the decision, part of it was just, it's been fifteen years, we should go out to bid.
We, we felt, we felt, and there was an increase, you know, a substantial increase that was gonna be proposed, and so, we felt like we'd went to other cities, kinda got some information, we felt like we hadn't had a bid for fifteen years, we felt like it was wise to kinda find out what the market was bearing, you know. I think, you know, for me, I'm a little surprised that it's, it is such a large jump seeing what other cities were doing, and so. Nathan, did you find something, if we reject, I mean, and I guess I'm just kinda a deal guy, it's kinda hard, because, you know, I understand the bid process, we have to be fair, I'm not trying to, but if we reject all bids, what happens?
Then you have to go out for bid again.
Do you find anything from our, did you call?
Yes, I called Rob. Uh, basically what I said, our code limits, uh, what you can do.
So, are you gonna, will we be getting a, a staff report on the, the, the contract? The terms and the specifics for each of them?
I can give you a summary, I mean, the intention tonight was to give you that summary, hopefully get some direction from you, and then work with the, whichever company you were leaning towards to move forward. But if council's not ready for that tonight, we can, I can continue to get you information, um, we just, we have to make a decision at some point. Uh, and, let me, let me try to dive through it a little bit more, give you some more summary information, then we can have a discussion, is that fair? So, overall, um, given the proposals we have on our table right now, I, um, while ACE has some high points, I would not recommend them, just because of the large increase that we're talking there. Um, so, ultimately, I would recommend a decision between Republic Services and Waste Management. Um, I think, uh, Republic, I mean, we don't have to go with can swaps right now, but they have bid a higher rate overall. Um, in theory, the customer service, um, should be, um, comparable between the two companies. Um, might be slight, there's slight, there's a few more tools with Waste Management. Um, however, we have had issues in the past with Republic that we have worked through. Uh, both of them have call centers, so, Republic Service and Waste Management are, you know, in Phoenix or somewhere else, they're not here locally. Um, here, here's just kind of some numbers for you to look at, so, what we're looking at per year, if we go with these current bids, if we accept something that's been proposed, um, an annual increase, if everybody had, if, if a home had a first can, a second can, and a recycling can, you're looking at a, so, over here, um, a twenty-dollar, um, year increase, um, if you went with Waste Management, versus a thirty-four-dollar per year increase with, um, Republic Services.
That's if the cans stay the way they are, right? The same number of cans?
Yeah, so, if you, if your home had a first can, a second can, and a recycling can, you'd see a thirty-four-dollar per year increase.
So, the increase with Republic on, is it on the second can a lot?
Uh, yes, so, the second can, um, increases, they actually decreased, both bidders gave us a decreased price on our first can. It's the second can and recycling can where we're seeing an increase. So, here's your current, so, five ninety-two, one fifty-six, four seventy-three, Republic's proposal numbers, there are difference, Waste Management's, and the difference there.
So, when you went out, when the bid is there, you know, when you, when you're looking at the bid, was that just always a first can, or was that all cans in the city that we currently have? The, the five eighty-five, does that include, you had forty-six hundred first cans?
Yes.
You know, I think twenty-eight hundred second cans, you had so many recycled, so that bid included everything currently, how, how it sits?
Yeah, so, I gave them our current data and said this is how many cans we have in our city.
So, the residents can choose, okay, your first can's here, it's really your second can and recycling that we're starting to see increase, correct?
Correct, and I wanna be clear that these are the rates that Republic is giving to us. These aren't the rates that we will pass on to our residents, because we also have to add in tipping fees and the other charges that come with garbage.
Are the first cans, are they all the same size? Like, I've lived in towns before where like the first garbage can was like, you know, half the, half the size. Are they the same size, so that one can is comparable to one can from the other place?
Uh, so, we gave them a range, so, there's a typical, like, there's a standard of what a garbage can runs. Um, I think it's ninety to a hundred and ten gallons. Um, so, the, the sizing is fairly, it's, it's fairly close, yeah.
Is one bigger than the other?
Give me a minute.
Or do they even say?
Give me a minute, and I can look that up.
I mean, it appears to be about seventy dollars difference per household over five years, you know, of the contract. And I think that's where you have to make a decision, you know, as a council, you gotta say, for seventy dollars, is it worth changing cans out? 'Cause that, that's probably the, the concern.
Um, I absolutely agree, Ree- or, uh, Kurt, um, or council member Osler, um, so, what's it worth it to you, um, to do this? It's a big deal to change providers. Um, however, you know, we would save money with this, with, by switching providers. You need to think about the fact that we'd have to roll out with a new provider, do all of the new cans, and COVID-nineteen is going on right now, so our staff's a little bit burdened as it is. That being said, we can absolutely do it, I have confidence, actually, you know, I did speak with Waste Management today and said, hey, is anything changed from your bid based on what's going on, and they said no. So, they would still plan moving forward with us, we could still make it work if council wanted to do that. Um, so, it's really up to you, council. Um, Reece, do you happen to know, in your propos- do you happen to know the size of can, toters in the city for us?
Yeah, they're, depending on the style, 'cause they have like an edge style and a classic style or whatever, but they're between ninety-five and ninety-six gallons, so, we kinda use the term entertain interchangeably amongst all haulers, and they just call them ninety-five gallon toters, or, toter's kind of the term for Coke as well, so, toter is a company that sells them, but we, but we, uh, not, not a ninety-five gallon Coke, but, um, so, it might be a, might be a Schaefer brand, but they would still call it a toter, if that makes sense.
Um, and, uh, Waste Management did call out that they, the, the toters they plan on using are ninety-six gallons, so it's the same size.
Same company, same. Can I say one thing, Erin?
That is up to the mayor.
Mayor, you may. Sorry. Uh, I, I would just have you look at it, and, uh, and since I'm here, I guess I can say this, I would just have you look at it in real simple terms, it's an eleven-thousand-dollar difference for forty-nine-hundred homes, you do the math, it's two dollars and forty-one cents a year per home.
Oh, Erin, you were showing, showing, you know, promise, you were showing about a fourteen-dollar difference.
It's a different calculation, essentially, it's different ways to look at. It's a different calculation essentially. It's different ways to look at the numbers and the math. Um, so it depends on if you're looking at every single, you know, you, you have one of those at every home, which most homes don't. So it's just two different ways to look at it.
She's putting in there if every home had a recycling can, but you have sixty-one percent of your houses have a recycling can and twenty-three hundred of the, of the total have a second can. Well, not every home's gonna get a recycling can and not every home's gonna get a second can. So if you do the math on just the eleven thousands, like I said, it's two dollars and forty cents a year.
So how, just, cause we've been hearing a lot about, you know, Councilman Smith asked about recycling. What percent of our recycling is just going right to the garbage anyway? I mean, you know, are, are we having our, 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 you know, here our city have that third can, but it really should, it's just garb, you know, it's, we're not really able to recycle it?
That's a great question. I can tell you what, I got, a couple of months ago, I reached out to Rocky Mountain, to the owner of Rocky Mountain and, uh, he's actually a Highland resident. And I asked him, or maybe he's in Alpine, I think he's in Highland. And I asked him, I said, can you send me a letter so that I can have written proof of what you're saying is being landfilled? And he sent me a letter and it's about twenty-five to thirty percent of the material that goes in the can is being landfilled. Now, he said though, that is almost the rate of contamination. So about somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent of all materials that go into the can is not recyclable. You know, it's a pizza box with grease on it, or it's a limb, or it's something, a clothing or something like that that would be recyclable if you took it to the right place, but it's not recyclable in your all-in-one curbside, single-stream can. So he said between twenty-five and thirty percent of the material is not being recyclable, which is essentially the contamination rate.
And contamination rate means stuff that it's not contaminated. It's just, it could be glass, it could be.
You have a hundred pounds of recycle, of, of things that we've taken out of the recycle can and thirty of those are not recyclable anyway.
So what you're saying is between sixty and seventy percent is being recycled. So someone wants to, I mean, cause that was always the hard time. I was thinking, yeah, I want to be a good steward, be careful. But if it was just going to landfill, I'm paying extra for a, a can.
A second can, sure.
And that was why I was just trying to understand what would be, just also, cause we have a lot of residents that maybe ask, hey, is it really being recycled? So.
That's a wonderful question and that's why I reached out to him and said, give me your, give me an, an email that says this so I can take it to the cities and, and I'm not just spouting off a number.
And, um, Erin, would, does Republic want to keep the same transfer stations would be a question? And then also what does the front office staff, um, think since they're the ones who have to deal with it all the time?
Absolutely. So, um, Republic is working on getting a new trans, uh, having their own transfer station. Um, and so they, they wrote in the bid that they would like, uh, they would like to talk to us about changing transfer stations when our contract comes up for renewal with, um, with North Point. Um, however, they do know that at this point we are with North Point and they are required to take it to North Point. Um, so when we reviewed the bids, I had three different, um, people review them myself. I reviewed them. I had Gary LaCheminal, our finance director, review them from a fiscal perspective and insurance and risk management. And I had Candace Linford, who used to be our utility billing clerk and who got all of the complaint calls. Um, so, uh, um, Candace was very frustrated with the call center. She would prefer to go to Waste Management. Um, Gary, um, from a financial perspective, he liked Waste Management. Um, but when it came down to it, he and I had the same kind of conversation as, so it's eleven thousand dollars. It's, it's, you know, it's a hard call. Um, if it's worth it to save the money to go through that cost, I don't know. Um, but the customer service.
Because we have three new council people, we need to talk about the customer service.
Okay.
One of the concerns that was also brought up is that they used to have a local call office that now has been moved out of state. We had several complaints that, you know, people not getting their cans picked up. I mean, some of it, you know, it wasn't always price we were looking at. We were looking at, we've had some struggles with service.
Absolutely.
So what's the difference? I mean, you know, it, it always sounds nice and shiny to go to a new company, but you might have the same issue. But why, you know, why do we feel that Waste Management might be better than public Republic? Is there, is there ratings out there?
It's a hope. Um, so they talked a lot in their proposal about their customer service, the training they go through, um, how they handle customers and it, it seemed very great, right? It seemed, it seems new and shiny and great. I, I, so I've been talking to city managers for months about this and, you know, in, in talking to them, they're all fairly happy with their providers and they all say that providers tend to miss cans here and there. So we go, if we make the decision to switch Waste Management, we're gonna still miss cans. Well, we're still gonna have customer service issues. I cannot guarantee for you it is going to be better than Republic Service. Um, I, I can hope that it would be better than Republic Service two years ago when they first switched the call center because it was really hard at that time. But now, and I can tell you that they have maybe, so they have an online chat tool that Republic Service doesn't. Um, but the app, um, Republic Service has an app. So in theory, they're, they're very similar, um, from what they're telling me on paper. But Waste Management did emphasize their customer service heavily and, um, so because of that, as, as Councilmember Bill's brought up, um, because of the frustrations, um, our front desk staff, our utility staff was hoping to see a change.
So let me ask a question. So, I mean, we have our carriers and things and they go to different transfer stations. All of, right now they're going to go to North Point.
Correct.
Because of our current con- contract there. But the, the question is, everybody's talking about different transfer stations. Is that where people take their green waste and all that? Because a lot of people, you know, uh, like to have a place that's close. I mean, the problem with ACE is you'd have to haul it out to Eagle Mountain or something. And, um, and so, you know, for the local citizens that haul a lot of stuff down to, uh, the transfer station, uh, we'd want a transfer station that's close and convenient for people and, uh,
Absolutely agree. I mean.
I, I know my family hauls a lot of stuff down there. We're kind of on a first-name basis with everybody at North Point and I'm on the board at North Point just because of my assignment here. But at the same time, I'd like to know where all these transfer stations are and how convenient they're gonna be for our citizens cause a lot of people will be hauling their own waste in.
That's a good point.
And I'd like to know how much it costs per load too. So, you know, that, I, I think we need to understand that. So where's, where's Republic going to have a new transfer station? Do you know? Is that all kind of theoretical now or do you have a place or?
Reese, because we have somebody on the phone, do you mind coming to the mic?
Yeah. Um, because, uh, we currently are using the AIRC transfer station. So that's where we would, uh, negotiate with you if you decided to go somewhere else, uh, and not go to North Point in the future. Uh, we would go to the A, AIRC transfer station as well.
And where is that?
That's the one that, uh, ACE is, um, it's kind of a weird situation.
I thought ACE was out in Eagle Mountain.
A, no. IRL is in Eagle Mountain, Cedar Fort actually. IRL is Intermountain Regional Landfill. That is, ACE does not own Intermountain Regional Landfill.
Okay.
ACE is partners with Eagle, Intermountain Regional Landfill on a transfer station in Salt Lake and also now in Pleasant Grove. So they're partners and it's called AIRC, which is ACE Intermountain Regional Recycling Center. Or ACE Intermountain, yeah, Regional Center or something, Recycling Center, ACE Intermountain Recycling Center. And so they partnered together and we are taking our waste to AIRC, um, now. And it's totally legal. This isn't a, you know, we, we take our waste there. It actually helps all of transportation because when we take a ton of waste there, they take a ton of waste from their transfer station in Salt Lake to our landfill in Toilla so that our trucks are not passing each other on I fifteen.
So what landfill do you use then?
It would go to the IRL landfill. So any.
Where is that?
That's the one in Cedar Fort. That's the Intermountain Regional Landfill.
Okay. Cause North Point all goes to Bayview.
North Point goes to Bayview. That's correct. So anything that goes to this AIRC transfer station, uh, would go to the IRL landfill. Now, we have a piece of property behind our current, uh, our, our site, our division where our trucks sit and our mechanics are, is in Pleasant Grove. We have a piece of property behind that, that a few years ago, we had a CUP for a transfer station. But we're gonna sit on that for a while and see what it looks like in using the AIR, AIRC transfer station.
So.
So we may not, to Erin's point, you know, we could look at building a transfer station and, and, and would in the future if need be. But if the AIRC one works fine, we would just go there.
So why are the companies, I, this is just for interest sake, why are the companies trying to get away from North Point?
I can't speak for the other companies.
Uh-huh.
But I can just say, I, I can just say general in the, in the, um, in the whole field, in the industry, controlling where your waste goes, especially if you have a landfill, is key to your success. So you, you want to take it where you are gonna get, uh, tonnage at your landfill and support your own landfill.
Okay. I'm, I'm just kind of confused because, I mean, North Point's basically in Linden, border of Linden and Orem. And you're taking it to Pleasant Grove now. Is that right?
Correct.
But our contracts.
Not you, not yours because we're still contracted with you to take it to North Point, sure.
But where would our citizens take their green waste? Because Tempanoga Sewer District's not gonna be accepting green waste much longer.
Well, they can do, still take it to, you mean if the city decided to go to AIRC?
Yeah.
Of course, that's a couple of years away before it could even happen, but they could still take their, whatever they wanted to, to North Point.
We would just pay a higher rate.
We would just pay a higher rate for not being a member's, but that's what Alpine did, what, fifteen years ago?
Yeah, but that higher rate's doubled, isn't it? I mean, people have to pay eleven dollars now for load.
I believe that's the case.
Yeah, we'd like to know the price of that.
But I mean, really at this point, we're not talking about moving transfer for stations.
Well, but, but if you're gonna do it in two years, you've got to notify North Point in December this year.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's like.
It's coming soon.
That's like nine months from now.
But July is four months. Yeah, I mean, so we're.
Well, I know. But, but if that, but I think that needs to be a consideration if you're gonna change transfer stations.
Oh, yeah.
Because your citizens, I mean, I'm speaking of our family, we haul a lot of green waste down to North Point and we need to have a place that's convenient for people, uh, to go because that is a significant factor. Cause a lot of people, they don't care where their garbage goes as long as somebody picks it up every week. But a lot of people do care how far they gotta drive to take it to a transfer station when they got a lot of green waste.
And the cost when they get there. I agree with you Scott.
How much it costs. So right now it's eleven dollars a load or depending on how much you have at North Point. But, you know, I'd like to know how much it's gonna cost for that for other.
Yeah. And right now, I'm, yeah, I'm not considering, or I, I'm not encouraging council to considering moving transfer stations. I'm just wanting you to pick, who are you gonna, who's gonna haul for us? Who's gonna pick up every week?
But, but it seems like whoever you pick, you need to know what their plans are for transfer stations.
Well, our.
Especially if we have a five-year or ten-year contract.
Uh, our contract with them will say you will go to North Point unless we renegotiate with you. Because our, 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 I mean, so you're right, I, we could, every couple of years, we have the option at this point to remove from North Point. I know they might, they're looking into maybe extending that, but, um, right now our contract will say you'll go to North Point unless we negotiate otherwise.
We'll take it wherever you tell us to take it.
I'm, I'm just thinking the green waste because we've lost the green waste place at Tempanoga Sewer District. And so I'd just like to know, yeah.
That would, that's a, it is a, it's a fair ask to say if whichever vendor we pick, Erin, if you could find out. So we're, I'm assuming we're down council just to, to Republic and Waste Management.
That's staff's recommendation is to pick between those two.
So if we could understand if, if we go with either of those in the future and switch to their transfer stations, do they offer green waste pickup? What, what are our potential cost savings in, in, in doing that? Cause I think that would factor in to a decision going forward. So if that, if you could.
I am absolutely happy to do that. That's hard. There's a lot of moving parts because North Point is changing right now. But as, as Councilmember Smith has alluded to, they're trying to figure out how are we going to start taking all of that green waste that used to go to TSSD? They're also interested in potentially, right now they don't have the ability to bond. They're interested in potentially pursuing that. They're interested in potentially extending the term of the contract because, in order to be able to be more bondable.
Yeah, they want to extend it five, ten years if they could.
As we, as you mentioned to us, yeah.
And the green waste, basically, what can be recycled or whatever, they take down to Bayview.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I mean, that's what they're deciding right now because they can't, you know, compost it all, but they're coming up with a lot of different.
And take it down Bayview and then haul it back.
And I'm not set on anything. I just happen to sit on the board as representative of the city. But I'd just like to know because I know my family personally takes a lot of green waste down to, uh, North Point. And so it'd be nice to know where we'd have to drive.
Yeah.
Cause I know they won't want to drive to Eagle Mountain.
I do it every day.
Well, I know, but not.
But most people don't want to.
Not to Cedar Fort to take a load of green waste.
True.
So I, if, if you could, I think that would be a fair ask.
Okay. I'm happy to essentially write up some summaries. You can, you can have copies of the RFPs themselves and peruse them if you would like. Um, um.
Did, did either of the bids give, if they decide to be, you know, where we do the waste, have they given a bid what it would be? Just we can kind of even look, like you said, what the mayor's mentioning, hey, this is what we're currently paying. But if we did a switch, maybe there'd be one that is a, you know, a little bit of savings or if it's just, it, no, it's really e- equal. It's just.
Um, ACE gave me what their per ton rate would be if we started using them, but the other two bidders did not. Um, we gave that to everybody as an alternate. You can ta, or no, no, no. We said, we will talk to you in the future about this just because it is so complicated because there's so many moving parts. So, no, I don't know that data.
And Erin, I do want to thank you. I know this is, you've put a lot of work on this. You've done a lot of research. I do appreciate you being the per, you know, the guru if you want to save garbage in the city. So thank you.
Garbage is a lot more complicated than I've realized and every time I dive into it, I, some, I get a little bit more information and then I still am confused too, at some level.
So Erin, does Kim have any questions?
Kim, can you hear us somewhat? She's probably got herself on mute and it's gonna take her a second. I think that's me. That's YouTube being delayed. Give it a second.
Oh, I just saw on YouTube you guys asked if I could hear you. Yes, I can.
And do, does she have any questions? Do you have any questions, Kim?
No, I'm good. I'm following along on your livestream. Thanks, Scott Hart.
Counsel, do you have any, uh, direction for staff?
So it sounds like I'm getting you the proposals and kind of some summary notes and asking for some recommendations.
We do need to make a decision, you know, coming up. But I do think maybe you'd be good since, you know, like you said, there's just eleven thousand dollars difference. We got to say, is this really what we want to make, you know, it is pulling all the cans and getting new cans. We'd have to have a certain, uh, time that that happens. We'd have to look to say, is that worth the, the, the savings that might occur per household and that's.
Are we gonna get the increased customer service we're hoping for?
And maybe that's research, but, you know, maybe one or two of us could call around a couple of cities and see. It sounds like you did a little bit of that on this customer service.
No, but, you know, I mean, similar reactions. They miscan, you know, all of our haulers miscans on occasion. We, we appreciate their customer service. Nobody, nobody told me, don't go with Republic or we're switching away from Republic or Waste Management or ACE. Nobody said that.
You had a couple of people that did. Our staff that handles all the calls had made the recommendation to make the move.
Oh, yes. I'm.
I mean, so I am actually weighing, I, I am weighing, and I understand that's where all the complaints are coming on, but they must feel that there's something. And so maybe I'd like to maybe talk with Candace a little bit to say, hey, what have we really heard? Has it calmed down the last two years? Was it just over that two years or has it continued? I mean, cause I do think that does weigh, you know, you know, it, it starts, we have a cheaper bidder, but we also have the pain to change the cans. But if we're gonna have customer service issues and going, well, the pain is the customer service. The person might, you know, all the residents might be willing to make the change because of the customer service issues.
Okay, so.
Well, I, one more thing, and I think we need to help Erin so that she can get out of this business sometime soon. But I just remember, so I'm new, but I remember this discussion in November, December. And I just remember the staff was frustrated enough to make it, to have it be an issue, which is why we're, why we're talking about it. And we look and say it's eleven thousand dollars or whatever, but when we look at the length of time we stayed previously, right? It's fifteen years. So it's, um, I mean, I think we should look at the, like, kind of the long, the long run, what we want rather than like the inconvenience one time of switching out cans if we decide that's what we want to do. Because there was a convenience of five-day-a-week pickup or, or whatever. So I don't think that should be the thing that inconvenience makes us make a decision for one time.
And maybe someone would really like to get a brand-new can because some of us have had some cans that have, wheels have come off or has been smashed in a little bit. Now, we're gonna get that over age of anything, you know, but, but we also get all brand-new cans.
It's true.
I haven't paid this account, twenty bucks to wash my cans.
I didn't know we had.
I will say, if your, if your can is in, is really without wheels and things, we can get you a new can, you just need to call us, Kurt, and we'll help you out for whoever.
I love my can.
Yes, there is absolutely something to be said, brand-new cans across the city, nine thousand new cans, with a ten-year warranty, so, happy day.
What do you mean by, are we paying for cans?
No, um, no.
We just said a ten-year warranty.
Sorry, so Waste Management, as a part of their bid, talked about their cans, and so these cans come with a ten-year warranty, you know, it doesn't cover, you know, if you were mistreating your can, that kind of a thing, but it's brand-new cans, is what I'm getting to.
Have we, have we had problems where we're, our residents are getting charged for cans? I thought that.
No.
That services change out was free to have done.
Yes, as long as it's, yes, yes, so if you, um, you know, and I, I don't know if this actually happens, but I know if you lose your can, in theory, you can be charged for a new can. I don't know if Republic actually charges people, to be honest, so we tell people that and tell them to call Republic if you really can't find your can in one of those massive windstorms or something that we tend to get.
Okay, so, direction is, do a little bit of more homework on the transfer station.
Okay.
Switch, uh, potential benefits, um, and then council, do your own homework. And then we'll have it, uh, I assume, potentially, as a, either consent item or a dis- or an action item on a future meeting.
Um, so, sorry? I, so, the next thing we were going to bring to you is a contract, so I don't know who to work with at this point, to get a contract solidified until I get some direction from council. So, um, I honestly, at this point, you know, I'm happy to talk to Reese right now, and I would like to talk to Waste Management to say, if I have to push this out to the end of April, are you okay with that, right? So, if, it come March, after I've given you some report, you can make a formal vote then, but then I don't sign a contract till April. I need to make sure with Waste that that's what they're, they would be okay with that. Right now, our proposal said that hopefully we would enter into a contract to the end of this month.
So, our next city council meeting actually happens to be on March thirty-first, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, this is, this is just direction to staff, so I'm assuming that could be provided between now and, and the end of March as well. If you've got a consensus from.
We need to buy a week from Thursday.
A week from Thursday.
We have what? Sooner than that, we need it by the end of the week.
End of this week or end of next week?
So, when we talked, uh, with the carriers before, the deadline was very tight, and this was probably pushing it to begin with. Uh, to have contracts done, if you remember, we pushed the, uh, because of spring break, we pushed the meeting to March thirty-first, and the next one is April, end of April, and, and that's pushing our limits to be able to, um, execute by the end of, uh, by June first.
So, no later, we have to, we should decide no later than our next council meeting.
Correct.
And if we can get direction, consensus via email or phone calls before then, we can go ahead and move forward.
So, tell me again, since I'm new, just for clarifying sake, what specific piece of information is it that you think you're missing? I'm just wondering if it's like a specific piece of information that's gonna totally sway us one way or the other, or change our mind? So that Erin isn't running around in circles, unless you want to. I'm just wondering, like, what piece of information are we missing, and is it the crucial piece that's gonna make us, um, change our minds on a decision? Cause I would like to get it done.
Well, uh, again, I'd just kinda like to know what long-term plans are these companies are for the transfer station. Uh, it's, it's important to my family personally to know where we're gonna take our green waste. So, if it's just to Pleasant Grove, rather than North Point, that's okay, if it's out to Eagle Mountain, that's a big deal. And so, I'd like to know where, what their long-term plans, yeah, we're locked in North Point, we're really only locked in North Point, uh, for, you know, a year and a half more, and we have to let North Point know by December. So, to me, wh- where we take our green waste is kind of important, cause the Timpanoag Sewer District's not gonna accept green waste after July, and they're really not taking much of it now. So, I think that's an important thing for me to know. You know, price-wise, you were telling us that Waste Management is the better contract, it's not much different. Um, I personally have never had any problem with my service from Republic, um, I wouldn't mind getting some new cans, but I'm sure if I asked for a new can, I could get a new can. So, you know, to, to me, it's kind of sixes, uh, but I think if you're changing the day of delivery and a lot of things, a lot of changes for people and stuff, I think we need to take that all into consideration, because the word doesn't always get out from our website or, or newsletter and different things. So, I, I would really, I'm kinda most interested in the transfer station as much as anything, cause I know my wife, the first thing she'll ask me, well, where do I take our green waste? You know, and I know we're locked into it for a while, but yet, at the same time, is it gonna change in two years? So, I just kinda like to know what their plans are, I'm not sure why all these companies are building their own transfer stations. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm just kinda, uh, in, kind of enticed by why are we doing this? You know, I'm just kind of intrigued, I should say, is what I'm saying, but, um, so, that's my concern. Price-wise, obviously Waste Management is the best deal, we save ten thousand dollars, and I think we need to save money wherever we can. But again, I've never had trouble with my service Republic, I don't have any problem staying with them.
So, you know, Brittany, you bring up a good question, I'd like to talk to Candace to understand about the customer service a little bit more. And I, I, you know, I actually might call Waste Management to actually pretend like I'm a customer, to see what type of, you know, calling in and see what type of response we're getting. Um, you know, the, when we look at the cost, you know, Aaron, you showed a fourteen dollars per year, um, you know, difference between the two. You know, when you look at the eleven thousand at forty-six hundred homes, that's about two dollars and thirty-nine cents, I wanna understand, you know, if it's fourteen and you're talking seventy dollars over five years, that's probably enough to say, yeah, let's make the change, cause it might be over fifteen years. You, I mean, you know, cause we, we've been pretty loyal, you know, and I would assume that we're probably gonna be loyal going forward, you know, it, it. And, and so, because of that, you know, the, 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 the cost can also compound where it does matter, you know, and you have a three percent and.
Right.
Um, and you, you, so, I wanna understand, Aaron, why, how, how can you're calculating fourteen? My calculation comes to be the two thirty-nine, and, and, and just, you know, I understand if everyone took all the services, it's the fourteen, but we don't have everyone taking all the services. And, but I do like where, you know, if someone only has one can, they kinda can control a little bit of their expense. You know, it, it doesn't seem to be too much of an increase, with one can, it's those who'd like to have a little more service, where the cost seems to come in. But I probably could make a decision pretty fast, uh, with, with some information.
So, can I ask council?
Just remember growth, too, so that savings increases, when you add boiler and the other.
So, can I ask council to get back with Erin by Tuesday of next week? And let her know where, where your, what your preference is, and between now and then, get questions answered? If you're asked? Okay? That gives you a week.
I, so I will get you information tomorrow, what I can, and ask if you have any additional questions. Um, and that's it, Mayor, so, as far as if we're back to our general agenda, unless there's anything else, um.
Are there any other, um, discussion items? Nathan, do you wanna review with council where we're at on, on staffing policies and how we're working?
Sure, we, um, we had, gave you summary last night of kinda where we are with staff. Uh, we're doing, uh, the, uh, splitting of public works, primarily that is due to, uh, how we operate. And so, sewer's a perfect example, we have two operators in sewer, and, um, if one was unfortunately to get sick, both would be down. And a lot of our staff doesn't like to do sewer, and so, we split those up, uh, so we have that. Uh, when you are in a lift station, it's not fun, ask Brittany and Kim, uh, being in a lift station. Uh, so, what we've done is, we'll have, uh, staff on six days a week, three days on, three days off. Uh, and, uh, we're doing that, we're, uh, currently looking at, uh, we've made some changes in our, how our front counter operates. Um, and analyzing how that works, some staff is more comfortable than others. Uh, we're, are running into, uh, some issues in the library as far as their checkout goes, and, uh, addressing those. And, uh, been working with, uh, IT, uh, to see what our remote, uh, work-at-home capabilities are, what jobs are, um, applicable for that, some just flat-out can't do it, um, for that, you can't fix sprinklers at home, right? So, park sprinklers at home, for example, um, that kinda stuff. So, we're making progress, it's slow, um, uh, every day's a different, uh, new normal, uh, for us. Um, yeah, I don't know if you guys saw it, or if you're commuting, uh, Governor had, uh, a new resolution passed today that statewide shut down, uh, gathering restaurants and things like that. So, uh, I think, um, it keeps changing every day, so, um, that's kinda where we are, we keep analyzing. Uh, obviously, uh, we have one staff member that, uh, is at significant risk, uh, that we're addressing, and, uh, we have three others that are in the, uh, high-risk category, and that's where our focus and concern is at this point.
Nathan, can you share, uh, with the council and the mayor, you know, you were open yesterday and, and today, how many people are coming in, and what is the services they're looking for?
So, yesterday, we had, uh, eight or nine come in, uh, and some was utility payments, primarily, we get two. Uh, utility payments and, uh, building permits are primarily, primary two activities that they come in. Today, we had about twelve, uh, come in, so it increased. Um, and, uh, uh, we had a couple more, uh, maybe development stuff come in, which was surprising. Uh, but, uh, primarily, those are the two that come in, uh, we, we just sent, uh, shut off, I think, payments, if I remember correctly. So, that spikes a little bit, come in and pay your bill, or you're gonna get your water shut off, notices out, uh, that spikes it a little bit. Uh, one interesting thing, uh, that we had is we had an increase in cash yesterday. So, we have folks, we have some normal folks that pay cash, uh, but yesterday, uh, we had a spike. You know, for us, you know, nine people, uh, three coming in with cash is a lot, so, uh, take it in perspective. But, uh, it was an increase, and so, uh, we found that odd. Um, uh, but we have, uh, some that just aren't comfortable with giving, uh, express bill pay and setting up, uh, automatic deductions or paying online that way, uh, so they'll come and swipe their credit card at the counter, so. We're trying to, trying different things, uh, I know, uh, some cities that won't take cash anymore. Uh, some, uh, guidance in other payment facilities where, uh, they, um, credit cards, uh, they either have to pay through their phone, through an app, or they, uh, disinfect a credit card. Uh, I've, I've seen it all, heard about it all, uh, Alpine is getting ready to, uh, shut down their, uh, lock their doors, and, uh, they're trying to figure out how to handle building permits and things like that. Um, I know Eagle Mountain did, but Eagle Mountain's a lot farther a- ahead of us as far as their access and doing things online. It's kind of a, this is how we're doing it, guys, and, you know, sign up, uh, we haven't done that. Ours has been more, um, how do we accommodate, uh, residents versus the other approach? Uh, I know Orem is very much public, you're not coming unless you have to, uh, so.
So, Nathan, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Mhm.
Is it, they don't wanna take cash because the person has to bring it in, or they think the virus is on the cash? Or is there a shortage of soap and water, or what? What, what, I'm, I'm a little confused by, why, it's just you don't want the people in there?
I, I think it's a combination, you know, I haven't talked to them, so I don't know, but I think it's a combination, I think it's a, uh, cash, you know, generally speaking, cash is pretty dirty.
Right.
Um, so it's a combination of that, and just having, just trying to reduce exposure, uh, so those two things, I think, are, are driving it. That's just an opinion, but I haven't talked to anybody.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious, because, can I make a couple of comments?
Sure, I, I do wanna thank, I do wanna thank Nathan, um, and staff, because I know you guys have spent a lot of hours thinking about how to make this work and how to be accommodating and, and keep, and keep everyone safe at the same time. And I, uh, I just, anyway, very, very much appreciate what you're doing and, and will support, um, whatever conclusions you come to. I think you're, you're very thorough, you're very cautious, um, and I appreciate it. So, go ahead, Scott.
I, I just wanna make a couple of comments and maybe go on public record, and so, you know, I'm primary care, so, and I have a Masters of Public Health and things, and you know, I laud all the efforts that everybody's making to social distance and all this stuff. What I do worry about is we have to be very careful not to panic people, cause I've had a big up-sweet, and, and swing in patients coming in who are so anxious. I have one fifteen-year-old girl that will not walk into a room until they Clorox every surface. And so, I think what you have to realize is, the purpose of the social distancing is that, yeah, this is a contagious virus that most of us don't have immunity to yet, but at the same time, eighty-plus percent of the people who get the virus survive and do well, it's like a bad flu, we certainly don't wanna get it, and so, that's why we're doing this. It's the, it's the people that are immunosuppressed and older that need to be super careful, and we need to be considerate of that. Now, that said, uh, the goal of all this social distancing and all the governor's thing, they're grounded in, in good scientific fact. What they're trying to do is blunt the raise, or the rise of this infection in the public so that we don't overwhelm the intensive care units, because the people that get really sick end up on ventilators. So, it's, it's buying time to be more prepared. But that said, as of today, there's only been two, um, people in all of Utah County who've been diagnosed as having this. So, they've done over nine hundred tests, and they've found fifty-two positives. As far as I know, there isn't a patient in Utah that's in the hospital with this, and there's certainly not been any deaths. So, the state of Utah is kind of at the forefront a lot in kinda blunting it, so the states like Washington, New York and things are having that. But I kinda want to reassure people that we will get through this, um, as I was coming today, uh, they're talking about a treatment. Um, they've found that people that have had this and, and done well, and, and there's more and more people that have survived, that if they donate plasma, their plasma is rich in antibodies, they can, that antibodies can be used to treat other people who have the illness. Uh, they started testing vaccines in Seattle area yesterday, and the preliminary reports are, people are not having any problems so far with the vaccine. Uh, there's a lot of research going on, there's a lot of companies coming in, um, what we were hoping to find is some sort of medical treatment for people that are quite sick. So, I think we need to kinda step back and say, this stuff is important, but what we don't want to do is make everybody kinda panic, because I think we're going to suffer more from the financial consequences of this virus and people with anxiety attacks than we are from actually getting the virus. So, I, I just recommend that people just kinda take deep breaths, I'm kind of on the front line, we're real careful about who we see in the office. I may get the virus, but, you know, I think it's important not to be so afraid that everybody's panicking, this still, everybody's cleaned out all the toilet paper and all the bottled water, I mean, it doesn't even make logical sense. And so, we've gotta keep people from panicking, and we just have to be the adults in the room, I think. And that's what I've been trying to do as a physician, and I reassure people, we're gonna get through this, there's a lot of advancements. We're gonna have kind of a rough few months where people will get the illness, and, but we're gonna have to develop herd immunity. There's two ways you do that, people either get a minor case of it, which many people will, or two, you have a vaccine. So, they think the vaccine will be ready by fall, hopefully, and, um, I just have great faith that we'll get through this. And I think the most important thing is that people stop panicking, because I, I'm just really upset about people that are coming in my office that are having nervous breakdowns because it's being hyped so much. So, I think as a city, we need to be careful and protect our employees, but we still need to provide some services and kinda say, hey, we're gonna get through this together. And, uh, because, the worst thing this can do is panic people, I think. As, uh, FDR said at one time, I think the, the thing that we should fear is fear itself, and, uh, and so, we just need to be careful. Wash your hands, I'm, I wash my hands constantly and, and, you know, try not to touch my face, which is hard, but.
It's possible for me.
Yeah.
I know.
But at the same time, chances are, what we're gonna do is blunt this, we've got fifty-two cases in Utah out of three and a half million people. And that's out of nine hundred, that's about a five percent positive rate, and the nine hundred were screened exclusively for the disease. They had to have all the symptoms. They had to have all the symptoms. So, yeah, there's more out there, but I think we're gonna get through this just great. And I appreciate all the work that Nathan and the staff's doing, and I support you a hundred percent. Do we need to shut everything down?
Hmm.
I don't think so. And, you know, we still have soap and water, and hand sanitizer, people paying cash, or that. I think your big risk is if they come and sneeze on your cough, and they have the virus. And so that's, that's your concern.
So, Nathan, I do want to thank you all, so I know the mayor had mentioned that, but, uh, one concern I did see when I came into the off, you know, like, the city offices yesterday, is, I thought, I thought we had the tables kind of as a barrier. You know, Scott, you mentioned about the motions for, you know, of individuals. I think we've got to be careful if some of the, you know, employees feel, don't feel like they have a, that safe, if it be ten-feet, uh, area, that are, are they, are they able to do social distancing when these payments come in? Or are they coming right up by them? I mean, are, are we instituted something that way, so the employees are feeling safe?
Uh, we actually modified a little bit. Uh, we've actually pulled the staff back from the counter, so they're behind. Uh, and so we have a little bit more space there, and, um, we actually have set it up, so, uh, if it's a credit card transaction, you, they, the, uh, customer can actually do it themselves right up front. So, uh, we're working on that. There still has to be some exchange up there, and, uh, you know, it, it's a, it, it, it's hard, because you have, you have the range of, of reaction to this. You have, hey, you know, uh, just like my neighbor, you know, why aren't we all, uh, at the Jazz game? This is no big deal, to, uh, you know, everybody isolate themselves in their bedrooms and don't move, you know, that kind of thing. So, uh, uh, you know, I'm constantly checking with the employees, saying, are you comfortable? Or you feel like you're protected, you, you know, or you're kind of that? And, and the feedback we get is that they feel comfortable, so, um...
I think they need to have an opt-out clause, meaning if it's emotional for them, they need to be able to opt-out. You know, and say, we'll find a different area for you to, you know, to be able to work, where you, where you have that distancing. If they, but I don't want to put anyone in that risk, if they feel uncomfortable, which causes those emotions, and those are real-life emotions that individuals are going through. Like you said, there's gamuts that we're seeing in society, and we're, you know, you know, and that's, I just think we've got to be sensitive.
So we're at, so we ask that two ways, right? So you go to the front counter, and you ask them, and then you ask that, uh, through, um, without anybody around, right? So like an email, or a text, or something like that, where they can, they can feel like they can respond, uh, without peer pressure. So, um, trying to get them, trying to have, have them to have that, the ability to, uh, freely communicate, so...
So, Scott, you went on the record, I want to go on the record, to ask people to quit emptying all the meat at Myers Meats. I can't go and get my blue bacon cheeseburger, or the little hamburger you can go cook up, or the tri-tip. I'm going, man, that's, they've ran on that, so if everyone could just share.
Well, there, you know, there, there's no need to panic. We're gonna get together as a nation, and our healthcare system is sound, and we'll get through this, yeah.
Okay, and my closing comments are, if you need a break from the news, go to Utah's Highlander, watch the last two-minute Tuesday, and you can see our videographer, Scott Hart, in his bunker, and you can find out what Hitler really said in the bunker when he was in there. And it is really, really, really funny, so...
I'm sorry, I did that, happy Saint Patty's Day to everyone.
Amen to that, yeah, I will entertain a motion...
I thought you were Dutch, and not Irish.
I had red hair, I guess it was not, no, I have some Irish.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, third, fourth.
By Scott, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here, everyone, thank you for the vast online audience of two.
Back and forth between Wyatt Barrett and Wesley Warren, so, somewhat interesting, actually. Amusing, I should say.
I will, uh, watch for that. Thank you for attending, those of you that came online. All right, have a good evening.